I call it to order and adjourn it, did you have to do this?
Well, we can still talk as long as it's stuff that's on the agenda. But we can't vote on anything because we don't have it in the form.
But do you want to talk about anything at all tonight, Ruth? Other than the fact that I cleaned up this stuff that in my opinion I think I'm going to go with a less expensive mower.
Well, that helps us come up, right?
Right.
No, you need Thursday.
I keep saying it, I said it doesn't take long. Other than that, no.
And I think the lawyer was very, very efficient and very good today. He was, he put it right out there on the table. And it wasn't illegal, it was, it was illegal and way real dumb, but it's, I'm not going to say this.
He says it wasn't illegal, but it was probably in the gray area and it hurt the policy of place and, you know, could get a kid better.
I told him, my Brian Helms, you don't count, you're not important, you can't vote. I told that over and over again.
We need to have better communication.
Yes, we do. I heard that one, I respect.
Because all of them will be left out of information usage.
And he also said, I said something about the guys that work for the city that give them more and stuff, you know, to stay in a mower. What he said is that?
Oh, he agreed with that.
He said, hell, yes, if I was giving them more, I definitely would have stayed in it. And that's exactly what the lawyer said. So, see, it's overstepped the bounds is what it is. Other than that, that's all I have.
Alright, so we're here in motion to adjourn, so I guess we'll just...
Adjourn.
Call it a day, uh, 6:04.
I told you that because I had things going on tonight, I didn't even want to say.
I don't know, I haven't looked back, that might be a record.
I think we had one that was 6:04.
Did we?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we didn't start until 6:02 or 6:03.
And now, I think things need straighten up around here. And rather, I'm keeping my head, but it's going to hit us.
I think we did have one where nobody showed up, just me and you were the only ones in here, I think.
I think that's who, I had the tax hearing for the Hell House that we took down because I had to have a public hearing and like, no, I showed up, I just pledged these bills by myself.
Yeah, no mayor, no alder, but just me and you, I think.
Yeah, it was, it was just us, yeah.
And you, you went and did the, called me to order, adjourn.
I did do it all.
Yeah.
Like, you know, let's set up quarters, we gotta follow that rule, so, yep. Cool.
Okay. I presume not tomorrow night, we'll see each other Thursday night.
We're two days from now.
President.
Alderman Rose Rosewood. Alderman Jennifer Weiss. Alderman Cody Myers.
We need a motion for adjournment. I'll make a motion if you're there.
Alright, all in favor, say hi. I propose.
For you being safe. About the tax hearing. All y'all are on their place of work, all perfect and essential.
Does anybody want to talk about our tax debts or our tax property taxes, real estate taxes or anything before we go on? Nope? Alright, tax hearing's over.
We're on the ordinance, 944. We make the motion, we move to ordinance 944.
I pick a motion, we go 944.
One second.
Alright, roll call, vote for first reading of Bill 944. Alderman Brian Helms.
Yes.
Alderman Rose Rosewood.
Yes.
Alderman Jennifer Weiss.
Yes.
Alderman Cody Myers.
Yeah.
Alright, first reading of Bill 944. An ordinance asserting the amount of money necessary to be raised by taxation for the general revenue purposes during the year 2018 and fixing the annual rate of levy therefore.
We need a second motion.
We have a motion for second reading.
Okay.
Roll call, roll call for second reading. Alright, roll call for second reading of Bill 944. Alderman Brian Helms.
Yes.
Alderman Rose Rosewood.
Yes.
Alderman Jennifer Weiss.
Yes.
Alderman Cody Myers.
Yes.
Alright, first reading of Bill 944. An ordinance asserting the amount of money necessary to be raised by taxation for the general revenue purposes during the year 2018 and fixing the annual rate of levy therefore.
We need a second motion.
We have a motion for second reading. Roll call, roll call for second reading. Alright. Alright, roll call for second reading of Bill 944. Alderman Brian Helms.
Yes.
Alderman Rose Rosewood.
Yes.
Alderman Jennifer Weiss.
Yes.
Alderman Cody Myers.
Yes.
Second reading of Bill 944. An ordinance asserting the amount of money necessary to be raised by taxation for the general revenue purposes during the year 2018 and fixing the annual rate of levy therefore.
We get?
A little more, we need a motion for a passage. A motion for a passage, alright. Alright, roll call for the passage of Bill 944. Alderman Brian Helms.
Yes.
Alderman Rose Rosewood.
Yes.
Alderman Jennifer Weiss.
Yes.
Alderman Cody Myers.
Yes.
Second reading of Bill 944. An ordinance asserting the amount of money necessary to be raised by taxation for the general revenue purposes during the year 2018 and fixing the annual rate of levy therefore.
We get?
A little more, we need a motion for a passage. A motion for a passage, alright. Alright, roll call for the passage of Bill 944. Alderman Brian Helms.
Yes.
Alderman Rose Rosewood.
Yes.
Alderman Jennifer Weiss.
Yes.
Alderman Cody Myers.
Yes.
Ordinance 944 has passed.
Ready?
Yep, alright.
We use a bid for the mower, but when that starts, I want to say something. I didn't do what I did, I was fine, I paid for it, it was a law, there was a requirement that the board be together and vote on this before it could be law. And you were at the lawyer's office, you know that.
Yes.
And I did not do this to hurt nobody's feelings or try to say this, but I got told I wasn't important anyway, I just broke. You know, that breaks love. But it is important to know what you're doing.
And that's okay, we agree.
Alright, I want to make that very clear. I wasn't stepping on nobody's feet, I was doing it the way it should be done. Okay. Anybody got anything they want to say?
I'd like to talk to the board about the mower situation.
Alright.
First of all, as aldermen here for the city, these decisions are very important, and we know they are. And we have to carefully consider every bit of money we spend for everything that we do. We're not a rich city. So, these decisions that we make, we also want to include our employees, our mayor, and all the aldermen, of course, knowing what's going on. And this mower issue is important, one, because our mowers are broken down, two, there's a sense of urgency to get things mowed quickly because the grass is already getting high. And there was a great deal of confusion on how we go about buying a mower. But employees came to my house, said our mower was broken, basically told me that we need to get a new one, and I said, look, we are working on a city where we're trying to keep this place clean, we're trying to keep it mowed, and we actually want to make it more beautiful, and we're going to need to get a good mower. My suggestion would be, let's try to buy a new one again and then use it when we have to. So, the two employees leave my house, I only want them to include the mayor and include an alderman, so that during this process, we'll all be aware of what's going on. So, that's how it went down. We listened to what the employees had to say, Cody Spearhead did researching and going to the dealerships to look at mowers, and I came back with some advice, and he actually did the legwork. So, I was glad to see an alderman get involved. But very appreciate the mayor's opinion and, of course, the opinions of the employees, but in the end, the aldermen have to make a good decision for the city. And it looked like we were able to get a new one, and that was important. So, I have some questions, and I was hoping that we'd have Frank here today. Is he gone?
No, he's here.
Because Frank, you've had some information from the city about John Deere's, and I wanted to ask you a few questions about this, okay?
Yeah.
Want to have a seat?
I'll have a seat.
What I want to do is, in this process of asking you questions, just get your sincere and honest answers to a few things. And, one, what kind of mower did the city have to begin with, and how long have they been going with it?
We had a Toro Z Master, we've had it over 15 years. Anyways, it was a good mower, and then I was calling companies that deal with Toro, and checking on prices on Toro. And, you know, the pricing of Toro was kinda high, and then I got bids on grasshoppers, which then were even higher. So, that was where I stuck at, on, because I didn't know what kind of amount you guys were willing to try to spend or anything like that. So, I mean, I, in my honest opinion, my mind was set on a Toro, which Mike's mind was set on a Toro too, because of the relation we've had with our mower and the breakdown time, changing out things. We already knew that piece of equipment and how it worked, you know, spindles and stuff, pour up in them, they were rebuildable, which I knew how to rebuild them, and anyways, putting bearings in and stuff. So, that was kinda the factor of why the Toro got involved, you know, calling companies, St. Louis and Down in Cape, because the one down in Cape was a higher price than the one in St. Louis, and that's the reason why whenever everything was going forward, the one in St. Louis was the one with the lower price. Now, whenever the John Deere came about, I was amazed with John Deere because of...
Well, let's go ahead and just talk about the Toro. Did you go to the dealership to get an estimate, a written estimate, or a...
I called the dealership. Anyways, I called Cape C Mo, Mower and Sports and Lawn, and Jeremy down there, and I called Aston Zonca up in St. Louis, and then I talked to Chris up there, so...
But you didn't get a written one from any of them. But, but your recommendation for Toro came from your experience with the Toro here in the city. Is it comparable to the new one, comparable to the one that you've been using in the city?
I don't really know, because I didn't go visually look at the new Toro, because I was waiting on a range Mitch to go look at one.
Did you bring any of that information to any of the aldermen?
I gave, I called you, and told you the price of one that day, after I got the price of it, anyways.
Did you talk to any of the aldermen about it?
No, you talked to me, Frank, because you asked me to sell them.
Yeah, I talked to you too, so, I mean, thing bad is, is I called, you told me and Mike to do the legwork, get back with you, so that's what I did.
Okay, so the Toro, the Toro's something to look at, the Toro was, the main thing about the mayor and bringing it in the loop is, and they have the aldermen's because of money. And we're having to do it pretty fast, so we needed to know what kind of money we're looking at. And quickly, we realized we couldn't buy a brand-new Toro. So, we had to look at another level of mowers. So, from there, you started talking about John Deere. Now, what's been your experience with John Deere? Have you, do you use one for your own mowing company?
Well, I don't use one for my own mowing company, but I've heard people that have them, they've had a good dealings with them. Now, I do deal with tractors, combines, stuff like that with John Deere, I know their service, maintenance programs on them. I know how the maintenance guys, the maintenance techs up in John Deere Equipment, William Novy, I know how they are with getting equipment fixed. And then we got a John Deere tractor for ourselves. If I call them and I say, hey, I need a part fixed on this tractor, they'll be down here within that day or the next day to help us out.
But you haven't had any experience with the John Deere. Did you get a John Deere bid in writing?
I didn't get a bid in writing, the only thing I did for John Deere was I turned around and I asked John Deere if they did a lease program, anyways, like leased to own it, anyways, through an agriculture program, to turn it around to see, so we didn't have to spend the money all out at once. That's what I was looking at, because I know reference of doing John Deere tractors and combines, how they did it, I didn't know if they actually did that for a Turk mower.
Just to continue with the John Deere, so you didn't get anything in writing from John Deere, but, and you haven't fully had any good real experience with John Deere, but what made you recommend a John Deere over a Hustler?
Well, technically, in reality, when I talked to Mike Longway on the phone, because the mayor asked me to contact John Deere back and ask them questions about that mower, and whenever I called him back, he'd sell on me all the specs on that mower.
Okay, did you go down and take a look at a Hustler or a Hustler dealership?
No, I didn't go look at the Hustler, I only looked at John Deere.
So, you didn't get, so you didn't get a bid from John Deere or Hustler, really got a bid from, you didn't get a written bid from any of those?
No, but I could, I could turn around and...
That's all right, we're talking about something that we're not sure what the prices are, we don't have a bid.
Well, the price, the price is $6,489.
What is your comparison between a John Deere and a Hustler mower?
Well, the comparison to my knowledge is on John Deere, John Deere equipment is 100% equipment. It might be a little higher dollar for parts and stuff, and it might be harder to get parts, but, you know, I never had any amount of functions with a John Deere, except for a little minor maintenance. But thing bad is, the company has been in service for 181 years, versus the company has been in service for 50 years.
Thanks, Frank. So, anyway, we haven't got any written bids on those, about equipment. We haven't compared the John Deere with a Hustler, we haven't been to the dealership for John Deere or dealership for Hustler. This is good news, this is good, something to know. We're going to make a decision, for the city of St. Mary and for the residents that trust us to make a decision, we want to have things in writing. So, when Cody called, being said he was an alderman and he was looking into this mower situation, I was glad, because I'm busy working, you're busy, you're busy working, and Cody had the time and wanted to get involved in it. So, I said, look, Cody, as an alderman, I think you need to get with, get advice from the employees, try to keep the mayor in the loop, go ahead and go to these dealerships, go down there, get something in writing and find out what we have and bring back what you think. So, I want to ask Cody, did you go to any dealerships, Cody, and check these out?
Yes, I have.
Did you get any written bids for any of the equipment?
Yes, I did.
What are the bids that you have tonight?
The bids I got for tonight is a John Deere one for $72.99, $7,299. It was originally priced at $8,769. Then, I went over to Flea's Equipment and looked at the Hustlers for a 54-inch rear discharge. We can get it for $72,048.90. The regular price, ticket price, is $9,930. Then I got an estimate on a 52-inch side discharge for, we can get that one for $7,824.46.
So, having done that, and knowing that we want to beautify the city of St. Mary, I think we all agree that we probably need to get a new tractor, and need to get a good tractor and something we can really work with it for the next 10 to 15 years, that we're going to put a freeway through here and maybe a wayside park and things we'd like to do to help the city. And I think, Cody, you've done some good work hitting these bids in this way, so we have something solid to look at and vote on tonight. But which mower do you recommend to us after the work that you've done, talking to salespeople, talking to the dealership, is going to guarantee us a good working tractor? What's your recommendation?
Our recommendation is would be the Hustler, because it's more of, the deck's more well-built than the John Deere, it's not as stamped out deck like the John Deere is. And the frame is built a little bit better than the John Deere's.
Is it going to be able to mow around the cemetery easily?
Yes, you wouldn't have as much grass, you'd still have a little bit of grass blowing onto the headstones, but not getting packed with the grass like side of the...
I have a question.
You're okay?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you. Now, you say you went, Cody, you say you went to John Deere and you went to Hustler both.
Yes, I did.
Did you stick around at John Deere?
Yes, I did.
Wait a minute, let me finish. Did you stick around at John Deere to ask that gentleman up there about anything? Because what I'm understanding, that I, what I know, is you went in there, got a price on one, and walked right up to there and looked straight up at the Hustler, or to the floor.
No, I, I went in there, talked to him about the mower and everything else. I even talked to him about other discounts, if we can get any other discounts, and he said no.
So, why wouldn't he think of things now?
I have no idea why he's doing that. Why would a, why would a company do a double dipping anyways?
I don't understand, like, if he can go do it for one, I would not be able to give you the discount as well.
I, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but I went up there, and I took my time out of my day to do my job, to look for a mower, okay? I don't understand why you're throwing a hissy fit about this, and, you know, I'm just...
Well, let me tell you why I'm throwing a hissy fit in your voice. First of all, I don't think that was your position only to go look at that John Deere to get these quotes. I feel like you overstepped your boundaries in my department.
How did I...
Wait a minute, because these gentlemen were already told to go get those prices. How you got involved, I don't know. And that makes me very upset. Secondly, wait a minute, I have the floor. Secondly, what's been upsetting me most is, you never one time got in touch with me about any of this. And this upset me, and this is not the first time this has happened. You have not contacted me, you have not, since day one, said anything or contacted me about this whole mower situation. Now, anything that I would do, I'd definitely get in touch with you if that happens. Now, I would, I would like for you to tell me why you did not contact me.
Sound like you're on a...
Cody?
I had to reset my phone.
Okay, don't use it as an excuse. He's got my telephone number, they've got my telephone number, Ryan's got my telephone number, Jennifer's got my telephone number, you can contact them, but you can't contact me. And yes, I'm upset, very.
The other thing is, we wanted to keep the mayor in the loop also, so, while we're...
Yeah, I want to say something too.
I was going to say that Cody should have called you and left your message at least to tell you about that.
I never got no contact whatsoever.
I had, they called him, they called you and left voicemail on your phone.
If I had a voicemail, it'd still be on, it's zipping something.
But in my opinion, Cody, you should have not been the one who's doing all that work. I don't know if someone told you to go do it, I don't know. If you stepped up to do it, you shouldn't have done it on your own.
Just to know what the mowers get pricings?
Because, yes, I do feel that is my part of my department, and I should have been included in that.
It's part of my department too.
Who has most of the mowing? Street department. Yes, you do have some at the sewer plant, just like Jennifer does in this park and cemetery. I think that we should have been the ones who did the legwork on it, and if you would have been, and wanted to be included, be included, fine, I would have no problem with that. But the way you handled that situation, I feel was wrong.
Does Frankie have anything else?
Well, the only thing is, the John Deere mower, we got the government land discount, and that makes that mower $6,489. About, almost a thousand dollars cheaper than this Hustler. And he said he was trying to save that he was going to give the government land, but Joe Frankie got a hold of him and told him he never got it.
Is that...
Now, them two guys, he had a little bit of say about the mowers too, but they do the mower.
Well, we just had that say, and we listened to it, and I think that Cody and Frank had talked back in the beginning.
Frank, sound nice.
Well, I'm not finished yet, Frank. I want to say this, what we've done here now is, we've got down to the sense of urgency, and I think that first of all, any alderman, including you, myself, or any of us, could have gone out and shopped this, because that's what the people in St. Mary's expect us to do, and be responsible for, you know, shopping, getting the best possible price, so it doesn't really matter who. But what does matter is bring the best possible product, and trying to bring it to this table for a vote, and that's what we've done tonight, so...
That's what we voted on Sunday.
Exactly.
Well, it was an illegal vote, that's why I was trying to tell him on the phone. He has to done his board at a meeting and be in the minute, and ask the people that want...
That vote was not, that vote was to recommend which one to vote on, that's what that was about.
No, you told me on that. I know what you told me on that call. It's done with. We read them.
We already decided on the Hustler.
Yes, but that is...
And you wanted to bring it to the speedy to vote on it, so, are we ready to call a vote?
No, because I want to understand, I want these people out here to understand. My second thing about this, these bids is the price. And it's, you know, the John Deere, if you look at the John Deere, it has a three-year warranty, 1,200 mile, 1,200 hour on there, the Hustler does not. You have to weigh those things when you're comparing prices.
How many hours of lift do we mow? How many hours do we detect to reach that mark?
I don't know. But, I mean, you have to look at all of that. You have to look at the reviews, you have to look at, you know, the warranties that we get, the products, how much the labor's going to cost, the repairs, any of that. And I don't feel like that was done on the Hustler. And if you have the Hustler on here, you can see it, it has a two-year warranty and a 500-hour.
And you can see that on the Hustler too.
No, the 500, the 500-hour is the five-year warranty, 500-hour, the two-year warranty is the no repair, no hour.
Frankie, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I did. I mean, on the John Deere, you're looking at a 25-horse engine, a taller engine on that, and then you're looking at a 23-horse Kawasaki on the Hus. As much grass as we mow, and sometimes it gets a little out of hand every now and then, because, you know, we do have other projects going on throughout the city. You want that extra horse pushing behind that mower when you're cutting, especially when there's stuff thick. The other bad part about it is, and I talked to a few people in the past week here about rear discharge mowers, and they told me, and these are commercial people talking to me, and they said, a rear discharge mower is great, it is great on behalf that they mow the grass every week and it's only about three inches tall. When you're pushing, grass is taller than we're pushing, because, like I said, we don't get to everything every week because there's no way we can do it. You're going to bawl and you're going to windrow grass, and then you're going to start killing the grass out underneath that dead grass. And up at the cemetery, I've been using a side chute discharge mower for the past 12 years now, I do not have a problem with blowing them off. Anyways, I generally blow them off and have dead grass and trail them down through the tombstones, and people start, well, why is the grass tall? Or whatever, so, that's my feelings about that rear discharge mower. Yeah, they're great, but on behalf of when you're mowing and trying to make things look nice, it's bad enough when you got a side chute mower, it clumps up. But thing bad is, at least you can actually take that grass and push it to the edge of the woods or whatever, if you need to go back across it. With a rear discharge mower, you can't take it anywhere except for behind. And anyways, that's the biggest fear of the rear discharge mower, they're basically a brush hog, that's what I call them. Anyway, and I talked to three commercial operators, one of them was my brother-in-law, he mows every day, I talked to him, Keeters, they told me the same thing, and I talked to Flea, and I talked to Scott Flea, he turned around and told me that rear discharge mowers are not the greatest mower, especially when it comes to when you're cutting tall grass. Anyway, but that's your guys' opinion, I'm just giving my opinion. You guys want my opinion as an employee? I'll give you my opinion.
We can take that, and certainly flag your David to a second.
Hey, one more thing, Mike, do you have any opinions on this? Would you like to speak?
I, I just agree with Frankie, I mean, you know, you want a rear discharge, because, you know, you're saying because of the tombstone, you're still going to have to weed it around the tombstones, which means you're still going to have to blow those tombstones regardless, one way or the other. So, you're not really saving any time with a rear discharge, and like he said, it's going to leave a streak, as if, like, like you do out here in the fields when the grass gets thick, and it makes it look like you need to go out there and bale the hay up, and you're going to have that up there. And like he said, with a side discharge, I can take it and, you know, roll it over to the, to the, to the wood line, but with that there, what you have is what you have, and it's, it's not going to look pretty all the time.
Can I say one more thing? And I know in the past that when, you know, when Mike first started with the city, we've had John Deere before, we've had, been in love with them. They were always good about coming down and fixing things that we needed to, or taking them up there and getting fixed right away for us. We, so we've had experience with John Deere before.
You mean you and just you personally?
No, the city...
Does anybody else want to speak?
And tractors.
Has anybody got anything?
Can you individual say something?
Huh?
Individual, yeah, I'd love to.
Okay.
There's a couple things on, they were so mishandled all the way through, I mean, you guys sure got together, what you wanted, get information to that clerk there. You don't know what he said, you don't know what she said, you don't know what they said, you tell them what you want. Get the information, get the warranty, get everything. Let the clerk get a report back to the mayor and the board. And then y'all decide, just don't know what Cody said, what he said. He said what he said, just don't know. But the mayor, it's his job to call and get the bid, call them, get them done right. We know that everybody, over these dealers would ask the same question, warranties, calls. And, and John Deere's always give the city a government discharge. So, hard as I'll make it, Joey, and then they own the tractor, I don't know about that. They always have, and they're good clerks, I don't care what you want. But I do get concerned when it's mishandled the way y'all did it. It couldn't have been that much of an emergency, I mean, just could have had a meeting any time. But your board should never go around the mayor.
It was, I'll tell you, have a secret, let me tell you what happened, it happened exactly the way...
Well, I'm glad the speaker, the mayor, hasn't told me, you don't tell me, you don't...
I was just going to tell you.
You want to meet that down, or do you... And I missed my speaker, go meet for that.
No, you can...
He don't tell me.
I'm just saying, I hear you, that's what happened with the clerk.
You need to go to a hall. This meeting should be run by the mayor, not you.
I said, that's...
Now, I'm going to say that.
Alright, thanks.
Now, you can help.
When this came down, the information came across to us that we need to buy a mower, and alderman said he was going to take responsibility for shopping it. He took advice from the employees, he came out and saw the city clerk, gave it to...
You want me to sit down, Lordy? Did I mention my speaker? You want me to sit down?
No, you can...
He don't tell me.
I'm just saying. I hear you. That's what happened with the clerk.
You see, that's what, you need to go a whole... This meeting should be run by the mayor, not by you.
I said that.
Now I'm gonna sit down.
All right, thanks.
Now, you can help.
When this came down, the information came across to us that we need to buy a mower. An alderman said he was gonna take responsibility for shopping it. He took advice from the employees. He came out and saw the city clerk, gave the clerk the information. The clerk was to notify the mayor. Cody dropped everything, all tears of the mirror to take a look at. She didn't come by to give her to take a look at anything. They called me back and said she's not coming over to look at any of these bids. She's not gonna sign a check unless it's for John Deere.
Did I say that, David? Say it, did I?
None of those words, you...
I told you I'd be there. I'd be over to get them papers and all of this, what I told you.
Cody was waiting here at city hall and...
Uh, you were talking to the...
Anyway, so that's the way it happened. But the thing is, is that now we need to get a mower.
Yes.
And we need to vote and want it. Cody, you wanna wrap this up? Do you feel comfortable about what you've prepared and you did all this work on it?
I ain't really too much to say about it. Really, it's whatever I say anyway, so it won't go, so it don't matter.
Well, five of us going out and got five different bids, came back to five different horses.
No, we wouldn't. No. And I don't like that she's saying that I'm too busy, he's too busy, plus he works too.
And not only that.
We're all busy, but...
That did my thing.
It should have been handled a different way and it was just totally wrong, is my opinion.
Can I say that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Legally, you're supposed to get a free bid.
That's all you have to get is three bids.
Three, three different bids.
I think we got two.
No, you didn't. You got one from John Deere and one from Hustler, from Flea.
Two different, but you had two different mowers on Hustler.
You got some state company. You got three bids from three different people.
What are you all about?
The grass is growing as we speak. I guess I'll have to... Yeah, right.
You talking about stamped decks or welded decks on the mower?
They're all stamped decks, I think. That's what Frankie said here, booked on there.
Uh, I thought we got seven-decked. Is that welded deck on it? It's a little bit heavier than that. Some stamped deck. Some wood gauge.
Seven gauge. They're both seven gauge.
Oh, they are?
The John Deere is a stamped deck, but it's still seven gauge.
Oh, okay. It'll be much different than...
Well, I guess the only thing left is does board go on what they want?
We wanna get the best possible mower for the night, for the city.
Can I say something for you?
Yes, you may.
What's the price of the two mowers?
Well, the John Deere is six thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and the, that's for seven thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars.
No raise.
Six hundred...
No raise.
There isn't a price.
There is a price, but you don't have much money to spend.
I just wanna be sure we have the equipment so that we're close on...
True, that then they're taking a chance, I think, to be late. Because you know what? Your service is gonna be John Deere, which you don't know anything about, Cody. That's my view of that.
And that's why I said the second thing is because of the money, the situation of the money. We're strapped for some money right now as it is. And plus the John Deere, you know, that's, that's so six hundred something dollar savings if you go to the John Deere. We know that we're gonna get good service from them. We know we're gonna get good parts. We know we're gonna get these things. We know that for a fact. And in my mind, to me, it makes more sense to go to John Deere, not just because of the savings of the money, that is a big factor. But we, they're a reliable company. We know them. We have dealt with them in the past with the city. Those kinds of things. And yeah, anytime you wanna take any chance, that if we didn't have John Deere and there was two, you know, two new companies, great, then that would be a great, you know, they go that route with the Hustler. But since we know those things about John Deere, I feel that that is a, that's a big part. But then the second thing is the money savings. It's over six hundred something dollar savings. Why would I give Flea six hundred something more dollars or almost a thousand dollars more and less things that we get?
I have another question. Did, did, what about like New Holland or Toyota or Kubota? Are they out of the price range or?
That I didn't, that I didn't check on. Cause I, I mean, I'm sticking with a name brand mower that's actually been around for a good while. And I'm, I'm sticking with a Toro that actually I'm, uh, we use for past fifteen years, you know, uh, being equipment for the city. So I mean, that's what I, the first option was going with. So I mean, Kubota, they're probably out of price range. I mean, I never actually looked into them. I mean, I even looked into Bad Boys because that's what I wanted, the Bad Boy, but you know, that's, uh, it's a commercial mower, but you know, there's a lot of different things about a Bad Boy than there is a John Deere or anything like that. They're a little bit harder to work on if you don't know what you're doing to them. So that's the reason why I didn't stick Bad Boy out there.
I heard that the mowers are bums, but they were definitely more running.
Yeah. I wanted to send it to the USP. Well, Mr. Schmidt here, well, he's had some experience with the Hustler mower before. What we wanted to do after the first recommendation of a Toro that we couldn't afford to buy was to buy a heavier duty mower. And something that will be, maybe last as long, will be just as durable. Another reason why we started looking at Hustler and we talked to them. Well, it's been a dear experience with the Hustler since no one else has had the experience here. Uh, with it. Has it, you've had it for a few years?
Uh, we had it for a year.
Is it commercial or is it residential?
It is a residential, but it's got a stamped deck. We'd like, uh, but it's a, I mean, it's a welded deck. The John Deere stamped deck is seven gauge.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's corrupted and stained.
Does it load, is it rear exhaust, a load for the grass off the rear, the one you have?
What size deck is yours?
Forty-two.
That's why. Because they'll have, uh, the mower can still power up. The smaller deck, they'll have it.
Well, I guess the next thing, if you take a motion...
What size deck on the John Deere?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four inch.
Then you wanna get a sixteen inch deck?
Yeah, I think I'll get between two or something.
Before we make a motion, I want to thank everybody for the participation, just including the employees. But most of all, uh, Cody, because he came down here and did a lot of work, took time off and cut the bids, did it the right way, tried to follow through with the procedure, came to city hall, gave the bids and tried to keep everybody in the minstrels, that he could be commended for his efforts as an alderman representing our city to do the work. Uh, he's made a recommendation. We need to respect that. And it's like we respect the city employees' recommendation. And now we need to make a vote, put the thing behind us. And, uh, so I don't know how you feel about that, but I'll make a motion to vote on the Hustler or the John Deere. How do you do that? Uh, make a motion, which one you want to purchase. I'll make a motion to purchase the Hustler. I'll second that. Cody Myers will put a second there.
I think I have a hold on that.
All right. I, I don't know. Roll call this. Um, Alden Rose Rosen's with you?
Or I'm gonna, against it.
Alden Bryant Holmes, for it. Alden and Jennifer Wise?
For it.
Alden Cody Myers?
For it.
All right. So if you pass it, you're purchasing the Hustler. Okay.
Word is on mine. He's standing off.
That'll be checked out.
We're gonna, uh, can't even find it now. The side by side, we're in pain overnight. Do you wanna pay back Christmas then?
Well, before we do that, I'd like to know some information about that since I wasn't completely in the right place.
We should ask. Okay.
No, I'm asking about the Christmas festival lights. I have no idea what that is.
The Christmas festival, a couple of people came up to me and asked me if we can set up something in the park for people to come and see, like Perryville does or whatever. Uh, do have a little donation box. They don't donate. That's fine. If they don't, that's fine too. Uh, I had a little bit of hot talk up there for the kids if they wanted. And as of right now, that's all I got to talk about with that.
So what does Perryville do?
Perryville sets up their park where you can drive through around it, but their park is a lot bigger than us. Uh, just drive through it and look at all the different light shows that's in there and...
So who is, who are you gonna get sponsored, not sponsored by?
I have the doll, one of the doll residents, she came up to me and asked me about that. Um, I'm gonna go talk to her a little more about it eventually because that's why I wanna take a look for it now.
But we did talk about it in the meeting that you were...
Yeah.
Were there in the notes or?
I just wanna say one more thing here. Make it clear that they picked a bid that was a lot more money than, uh, John Deere, which was a better mower all the way around because they wanted to prove that they could do their own thing.
Decisions are made.
You were mainly...
What'd you say?
The decisions that made.
You could say what difference does it make?
I said a decision's to make.
That's what I just said. I didn't doubt that.
Okay.
Well, I think there's one more I should say. You know, I'm all here also as members of the chamber and we're very concerned when we see the city spend six hundred dollars or say a hundred dollars more on mowers that neither one of them are too, too well versed going except having somebody check it out that shouldn't have been there to start with until he was ordered to that for the board. And y'all just audits here, spend six, eight hundred dollars more money of the city's money. And I keep hearing you talk about saving money and doing that. How in the hell are you saving money when you pay eight hundred dollars for two comparable lawn mowers that the city doesn't hold your rear discharge makes no difference? They gotta do the same thing. How is that saving money?
Okay, we already made that vote. We're gonna move to the next motion that we moved to the next ordinance, if you're voting.
What open?
Did you have one here for the side-by-side law courts?
We take the back, we take the device. We gonna do this last, compare the bill number?
The budget?
The budget, just wanna do it?
Do we have to do the votes tonight or one way?
We need a motion for bill number nine forty-five.
I made a motion for nine forty-five.
I'll say that.
All right. All right, roll call vote for the first reading of bill nine forty-five. Alden Bryant Holmes, for it. Alden Rose Rosen's with you? Alden Jennifer Wise?
Yes.
Alden Cody Myers?
Yeah.
All right, first reading of bill nine forty-five. The ordinance is about to be an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October first, two thousand eighteen, and the appropriate funds for so there to... All right, do you have a motion for a second view?
Need a motion for second.
For the second for a second, right? All right, roll call vote for the second reading of bill nine forty-five. Alden Bryant Holmes? Alden Rose Rosen's with you?
Yes.
Alden Jennifer Wise?
Yes.
Alden Cody Myers?
Yeah.
Second reading of bill nine forty-five. The ordinance is about to be an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October first, two thousand eighteen, and appropriate funds for so there to... All right, do you have a motion for a passage of bill nine forty-five?
A motion.
All right. And a second for passage, all right? Roll call vote for passage. Alden Bryant Holmes? Yes. Alden Rose Rosen's with you?
Yes.
Alden Jennifer Wise?
Yes.
Alden Cody Myers?
Yes.
For this nine forty-five bill has passed. All right, everybody. Do a motion to adjourn.
Need a motion to adjourn immediately.
I make a motion to adjourn immediately.
I second that.